Good evening. My name is Brad Kassrag. I'm alderperson for the second ward with Alderperson Marks. And I'm filling in for Mayor Burns, who cannot be here this evening. First order of business is to call roll.
All right. Here. Malaki?
Here.
Furnish?
Here.
Kilburg?
Here.
Kassrag?
Here.
Bryniki?
Here.
Marks?
Here.
Mayor?
Mayor, here.
Pashki?
Here.
Palmquist?
Here.
Thank you. At every city council meeting, we say the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like the Boy Scouts to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
... of the United States of America, and to the Republic, for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate that. First up, we have a presentation from the Fermilab by Greg Stevens, deputy director and chief operating officer. And I'd like to defer to Alderman Kilburg for a brief introduction.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to have with us this evening Greg Stevens. Greg, as Brad pointed out, is the deputy director and chief operating officer for Fermilab. I encourage tonight's presentation, since Fermilab remains an important research, educational, and economic engine for the tri-cities. Greg will be providing an overview of Fermilab and the exciting things taking place there, from the numerous construction projects to a lot of the research taking place on and off-site. Also, he's involved with the search for the new director for Fermilab. We appreciate Greg taking time from his busy schedule to be with us this evening. There will be an opportunity for some questions following this presentation. With that, Greg, we look forward to your comments.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Make sure I can operate this without messing up. Otherwise, I'm probably not qualified to be the COO. All right. Everything's working. Good evening. On behalf of Fermilab and Fermilab Forward Discovery Group, thank you for having me here tonight. I want to tell you a little bit about what's going on at Fermilab. For those of you who don't know anything about the lab, just a few miles from here, about 6,800 acres in the former township of Winfield in that area, but there's a lot of basic particle research. Fermilab is the hub of the United States Particle Research Groups and neutrino search, as well as some other scientific endeavors. And it's a pleasure to be with you tonight. So I'm going to give you an update on where we are in project space, where we are in operation space, and give you a little bit of a peek at the future of the lab. So by the numbers, Fermilab has more than 2,000 employees, about 2,200 as of yesterday. There are about 5,000 site visits processed during the last year to come onsite and visit the laboratory. There is no visit request required to come onto the property during the daylight hours between sunrise and sunset and see the general plant or the general site layout, as well as to come into Wilson Hall and look at the exhibits that are there. However, to go take tours and other activities at the lab, there is a registration, so that's the visitor request that had been processed. We had more than 6,000 visitors to the Letterman Science Center last year. We're on track to exceed that number in 2025. About 17,000 students were reached through the various programs, including field trips to the laboratory and field trips sponsored by the laboratory and our scientists, as well as Mr. Free's class visits, which are always a big hit. If you haven't ever seen one of those, they're pretty cool. No pun intended. And by, as the name might suggest, think liquid nitrogen, because there's going to be plenty. 212 undergraduate and graduate interns are augmenting or completing their studies at Fermilab. We have north of 200 interns at the lab so far this summer, and we're on track to be in the 250 range before the summer is out. There are about 120 post-docs that are currently at the lab, both doing studies as well as working on experiments. And just shy of 500 individuals participated in teacher education programs, including QuarkNet, so far through the end of June. Talk a little bit about LB&amp;F Dune, which is one of the largest projects in, not only at Fermilab, but in the Department of Energy Office of Science National Laboratory System. The long baseline neutrino facility, deep underground neutrino experiments, a lot easier just to say LB&amp;F Dune, is about a $3 billion project that's been taking place over the last seven, eight, nine years, and will continue into the early 2030s. We'll have the facilities ready to take beam in the 2030 to 2032 timeframe, so work is progressing nicely there. The caverns in South Dakota, which are shown in the, I don't have a pointer, but in the upper right-hand corner, to try to give you a little bit of scale, imagine the caverns. Now, these are a mile deep underground in South Dakota, in Lead, South Dakota, in the old home state gold mine there. So a mile down, these caverns are roughly two football fields wide and about three football fields long and nine stories tall. That's what that cavern looks like, and it's an impressive place to go visit. If you ever get the opportunity, certainly want to take it. They have neutrino day in Lead, South Dakota every year. It just occurred at the, about the middle of July, just two weekends ago. And you can see in the bottom right-hand corner, the ribbon cutting after all excavation was completed just about a year ago. Ribbon cutting with dignitaries from the Department of Energy and the US Senate and others in the Lead community were there for the ribbon cutting. The stately-looking gentleman just to the left of that ribbon cutting photo is Jim Kirby. He is the LB&amp;F Dune United States Project Director. He joined Fermilab Forward last September, and Jim's a great guy. If you've ever got the opportunity to meet him, it's worth the trip as well. We've also executed a successful test for lowering steel beams. In that giant cavern, there will be two detectors for neutrinos. Each of those detectors is, fills about half of that cavern that I described before. So to use the word ginormous is a little bit of an understatement. Each one of them has 90,000 tons of liquid argon in it, and we use liquid argon because it slows down the neutrinos and allows them to interact cleanly, because it's a noble gas, in this case, a noble liquid. And there are no electrons to strip off for the outer shells, so what we get is a nice scatter pattern off of the neutrinos themselves. The successful test for lowering the beams is about being able to take the framework for those giant detectors, which are 10-inch steel I-beams, and they have to be sent down in sections through the same elevator that personnel take, which is a much larger version of an elevator than you could in Macy's or some other store. But they has to literally be taken down a piece at a time and constructed in the underground. It's not something that happens quickly. That's the lowering and assembly in the cavern will take about a year and nine to 10 months. And some of that is already underway with some of the initial framework, but that will continue for quite some time. And the near detector prototype, which is actually a short baseline detector that is at Fermilab proper, has already been constructed and saw its first neutrinos in 2024. And then Protodune, which is a sister experiment at CERN over in Europe, was filled with liquid argon over the last year. Not nearly as large as the detectors that will go to South Dakota, but moving right along with the scientific program. Additional highlights, the PIP-2 accelerator project, the proton improvement project 2, which is PIP-2, is the engine that's shown in the photo with all the construction cranes around it. This photo is several months old. In fact, the building that you see, just the skeleton of, was recently dried in. The roof is on, and the ancillary construction or the ancillary operations building components have been roughed in and dried in as well. And the main corridor, which is off to the outward direction of what you see there, toward the crane in the far distance, which is the business end of the accelerator itself, most of that structure is now completed, and the backfilling is completed around the underground components and the shielding. And we're in the process now of doing the excavations and making the turn. So just about an eighth of a mile north of where you see that last crane, the beam will be turned, and it goes under some existing equipment at the laboratory and will be put in position to be able to be shot through the earth about 800 kilometers away in Lead, South Dakota, in that target that's a mile deep. So should be pretty easy to hit something that far away with a beam that's about the size of a pencil, but we're going to do our best, and we think everything is lined up. The new project director for PIP-2, the previous project director decided it was time for him to do something different in life, so he's taken a position at CERN, where he's still working on the program, but is working in a different capacity. So we named Christian Boffo as the new project director back in February. Shortly after Christian took over as the project director, the cold box, which is effectively the large refrigerator that keeps the components in the new accelerator at the temperatures that they're required to be at, which is very near absolute zero, about 2 degrees Kelvin, which by everybody's estimation is pretty darn cold. Anything that you're proud of, don't put near it, because it's going to freeze. So that cold box arrived. It was donated by India, the country India. It was built in France. It was shipped over on a ship and brought up by barge up the Mississippi and then offloaded onto a flat carrier and brought into the laboratory earlier this year, late December, early January timeframe. The early conventional facility sub-project has been completed, which was the support structure in the building to the left of the framework that's in the photo that's upon the wall. And construction continues on the remainder of this accelerator. Just a couple of notes, the existing accelerator we have at the laboratory today is a conventional cooled standard magnet accelerator. The new accelerator is based on superconducting RF cavities, which are cryogen-cooled, far more efficient and far more, far higher output per watt of input electricity. When it's completed, the beam intensity will be more than twice what the beam intensity is available today in the existing accelerator, and it will use less than half of the electrical power that we use to power the accelerator today. To give you an idea, the power bill when we're running the accelerator we have today at the lab is about $1 million a month in electrons. So ComEd loves us, and they can't wait to give us that bill every month, and they hate it when we take the summer outage, which we just entered last week, because our power bill drops dramatically during that time of year. In the astrophysics world, shown in the bottom right-hand photograph, the camera deep image, the Dark Energy Survey released its updated results in the last year, and the spectroscopic instrument released its first test results. These are the first results using some skipper CCDs for the cosmology research, those skipper CCDs, which are charge coupled devices, much like those that are in the camera that you carry in your cellphone. Those were developed and built, constructed at Fermilab, based on technologies that have been developed at the lab over many years. And then just about a month and a half ago, the muon G minus 2 final results were released as they continue to narrow the gap on the error bars on muons. For those of you who aren't physicists, like I'm not, I'm an engineer by training, but a muon decays into an electron. It's one of the subatomic particles that's been identified through the particle research, both here in the US and abroad. And so those are all making headlines. If you hear about them in the news, that's what's going on. In addition, the short baseline neutrino detector, which I talked about earlier, was filled with liquid argon at Fermilab site. It's about a half a mile from the construction that we saw a few moments ago on the PIP-2 accelerator. The short baseline detector is about 1/30-second the scale of the large detectors that will be in the caverns in South Dakota. And its job is to provide, just what it describes, a short baseline, meaning it's a very short distance from the business end of the accelerator. And so we will be pushing neutrino beam through the short baseline detector, and then it will continue on its path to the long baseline detector in South Dakota, and we will be able to compare the results between short baseline and long baseline and determine, are there any flavor variations in the neutrinos themselves? Neutrinos tend to take on different characteristics, if you will, as they make their journey across the universe. So we will have both up and running and be able to compare the results from those two. In the SQMS area, that's the Superconducting Quantum Materials Center at the laboratory, we do quantum research for quantum computing, qubits, if you've heard of one of those before somewhere in the media. Instead of having the digital states that we have today in the classical computers, where everything is a 1 or a 0, a superconducting component like a qubit has the ability to have multiple states. It's one of the great promises of massively parallel computing in SQMS. It allows a particular unit of processing to have, so far, we've been able to master up to five-plus states. So instead of doing simple multiplication of the number of individual cells, you actually get a compounding of the computing capability, which will be outstanding for things like encryption algorithms, but it's also very good for breaking encryption algorithms. So it's just like every other coin, it has two sides. We opened the Quiet Lab, which is a partner to Loud. If physicists like nothing else, they love acronyms. So the Quiet Lab is an underground, it's at Fermilab, it's about 100 meters below the surface, and it's there to shield it from the normal cosmological effects that would be on the surface. It's able to do some testing and experimentation that we can't do in the surface labs, because with the shielding that the earth provides with just that 100 meters, the noise that each of the detectors sees is about 1/100th of what it would see on the surface. So Loud is actually at the surface, and it, as the name would suggest, it has interference that is much louder than the interference that we get at the Quiet Facility, which is underground. Both of those are up and running. And the Integrated Engineering Research Center, which was finished about three years ago, it's received multiple awards for the environmentally sustainable design. It's a Lead Gold Certified Building. It's, has been renamed to the Helen Edwards Engineering Research Center. Some of you may have heard of Helen Edwards before. She was a pioneer in accelerator technologies, and actually during the Tevatron days at the laboratory, she was one of the leaders in the accelerator division, both in engineering and in physics. Outstanding lady. And now the building actually has the name already up on it, and there will be a ribbon cutting and dedication ceremony for that building coming up in the next couple of months. Construction of the new badge office at the Pine Street entrance. If you drive past the lab on Pine Street at all, or the Pine Street entrance, you've probably seen several piles of dirt. There's one that looks like a pile of dirt there today, but it's not. It's actually the building. Part of the design was, most of the building is actually below grade. Even some of it is mounded up. That's an environmentally sustainable design and allows the facility to remain cooler. It's a little hard to tell in the lower right-hand corner, but that is the building itself, and the ribbons that you see around the top, that's about 30 feet in the air, but the dirt is mounded all around it as part of the design, and it will be seeded with prairie grass and native flowers from the region. So that is construction essentially complete in about a month, and then we will be opening the facility toward the end of the year, somewhere in the November, December timeframe. The advanced emerging technologies that we have beyond physics, we're working with DARPA on a novel communications capability. Neutrinos can, because of their flavor variation, if you sample what it looks like on this end and attach some information to what that flavor of neutrino looks like a very long distance away, we've been able to show so far that we can decode the information at the far end, which is completely invisible to anyone who doesn't have a neutrino detector, and most people don't carry those with them. So it's a pretty secure way of communicating, and that work is ongoing now with work at the, it's about 400 meters deep in Lake Superior, and there's another experiment that's going to be run later next year, about the June-July timeframe, about a year from now, to further enhance and expand on that research. And then also during the last year, we started the Saturday Morning Quantum School Program, which is local communities, as well as the city of Chicago, to introduce lots and lots more students to what quantum is all about and how that might be part of their future career plans, as part of the outreach that we have for the next generation. The new AMNO contractor, I mentioned, thank you on behalf of Fermilab Forward. I'm a Fermilab Forward employee, and we started operation of the lab on January 1st this year. The lab contract had been put up for Recompite about a year and a half ago, and I was part of the team that pulled together the proposal for the management and operating contract at the laboratory. University of Chicago and University's Research Association, which were the members that were running the lab before, retained their member status. They brought in two integrated subcontractors to address some issues that the Department of Energy had identified as needing some additional attention, and that was Amentum and Longenecker and Associates, two veterans in the Department of Energy and National Lab space. I actually came from Amentum, worked for that company and its predecessors for the last, we'll just say, more than 30 years, and we'll stop there. When I started this job, I had brown hair, if that'll give you any idea how long I've been doing that. But part of our promise was to shore up the areas of the lab that had fallen into some disrepair and needed improvement, as well as to prepare the laboratory and deliver on the promise for the next 20 years at the laboratory. So we took over on January 1st, and we're moving briskly through our first abbreviated performance period, which will end on September 30. We just finished our third quarter, or second full quarter, which is third quarter of the fiscal year evaluation, and things are moving along pretty well so far. Secretary of Energy Chris Wright just visited us last Thursday, so these are hot photos right off the press. In the upper left-hand corner, you can see the secretary, and the lady with the stick is the lab director, Youngke Kim, Dr. Youngke Kim. The energy secretary described her as a very small but very energetic package, just like a neutrino, and he's absolutely right. She's one of the most energetic individuals I've ever met in my life. We're fortunate to have her as the interim lab director. We'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. In the center, you can see Jim Kirby there with his hat in the front of that group. Secretary Wright is to his left, and then Dr. Kim is to Secretary Wright's left. They were actually down in the Minos Facility, which is 100 meters below grade where the Quiet Facility, we talked about a few moments ago, is located. And this is one of the research tunnels, and it looks a lot like the caverns in South Dakota, except it's much smaller, and that is intentional. Some of the detector, the short baseline detector is actually in that facility. And then on the right-hand side, Secretary Wright was being introduced to the quantum cooling, the quantum fridges, as we call them. What's above their head actually gets lowered down into a tank of liquid argon, surrounded by a tank of liquid nitrogen to act as an insulator, if you will. And individual qubits are suspended on that gold array network, and we're able to charge those individual qubits, and working diligently to see what kind of different dopings and what kind of different materials provide the most sustained time of qubit state, is the best way to phrase it. What started as a few nanoseconds of sustainment is now into the millisecond, and we're approaching more than a second. In fact, Fermilab and a couple other labs have been trading records over the last several months. We'll get the record of longest sustained time, and then we get leapfrogged, and we're back and forth at this point, so it's a pretty cool time of the process. And then a little bit more about Dr. Kim, the interim lab director. She joined us back in January, on, on or about the 10th of January. She was actually deputy director for Science and Technology, the chief research officer back in the 2006 to 2013 timeframe. She's a member of the National Academy of Sciences and the American Academy of Arts and Science. She is a dancer. She's an artist. There's almost nothing she can't do. She's only about four feet, one inch tall, but to see her in action, she's at least 10 times that large and in charge when she's in the room. She's a fellow of the American Physical Society, and one of the reasons why she's not here tonight, and you had to settle for me, is she's at an American Physical Society meeting remotely this week. She's part of the American Association for the Advancement of Science, the Sloan Foundation, and a recipient of the Hoam Prize. The permanent lab director search is underway, and we have a goal of the fourth quarter of this calendar year for placement. Several candidates have been identified. There is a search committee that consists of about 20 individuals from the sciences, academia, and from industry that are on that team. And Paul Kearns, who is the lab director at Argon National Lab, is leading that search committee with members from the University of Chicago and URA and several other entities. So they're well on their way in August. They're supposed to be carving that existing list down to a shortlist of less than 10, and by the end of August, 1st of September, get down to the last two. And then by October, have the candidate identified and go through the final vetting process and hope to have the new lab director in place sometime between Thanksgiving and Christmas this year. Tried to talk Dr. Kim into staying and being the permanent lab director, but she said she was too old, and I reminded her that she's younger than me. That is what I have for you tonight. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Stevens. I appreciate it. Alderperson Pashki?
Hi. Thank you for your presentation. Is there any plan to bring back the music and lecture series that Fermilab used to have?
So the music and lecture series part of is, has been reintroduced. The arts, dance, and music are actually underway now. We've had two iterations of the dance options that are done during the middle of the day. We just had the second one about a month ago. And then the public lecture series is still under development, but it will be reintroduced a little bit later this year. Because of the security posture changes over the last couple of years, we've had to make some modifications. You know, that privilege of having lots of people come to the lab comes at a price, and we have to make sure that we continue to maintain the assets of the government. But yes, they are both. One is back, the other is coming back.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions for Mr. Stevens?
I want to thank you for taking some time to join us. I think a lot of times, the lab is a big question mark. People know that it's there, they know they have buffaloes, but a lot of the research that's taking place there, I don't think people really have a full appreciation for. So you shared a lot of information with us this evening. Interesting. A lot of it's difficult for us, it's laypeople to understand, but I think it's important as a community to realize that that's an important asset for the tri-cities. And it's a great employer. They hire a lot of engineers and scientists, and it's really international in scope, isn't it?
It really is. And one of the things I didn't mention is, we have about 2,200 employees. We have over 3,500 users from all around the world that come to the lab every year for various types of experiments. They use beam and run their experiments, but it's truly international, and what I've given you tonight is really just a tiny tip of the iceberg of everything that's going on at the lab. There's a lot of activity in 6,800 acres, and we have a lot before us to deliver on. You did mention the bison, the buffalo, whatever you want to call them. Every year, we have somewhere in the neighborhood of about 20 new calves. We have our 18th calf just this morning. It's a little bit late in the season, but we don't control that, the bison do, and the calf is doing well. Unfortunately, we lost two this year, but the 18, 16 of them are healthy and are doing very, very well. So invite you to come out to the lab, spend a little bit of time, check out the bison, go to the visitor's center, go to the Letterman Science Center, and come pay us a visit. We'd love to have you.
Thank you.
Okay? Thanks. Take care.
Thank you very much. All right. Next up is amendments to the agenda. Do we have any amendments tonight? Don't see any. Next up is the omnibus agenda. The item's indicated with an asterisk. We can approve with one motion. Do we have that motion? Pashki and Bowring. We'll call vote, please.
Pashki?
Aye.
Bryniki?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Furnish?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassrag?
Aye.
Malaki?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Mayor, aye.
Palmquist?
Thank you very much. That passes unanimously. Next up, municipal bills for payment.
Municipal bills for payment total $6,090,171.31.
Chair, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read, the individual items for which can be found in tonight's packet, which is available here and also on the city's website.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Alderman Marks. We'll call vote.
Bowring?
Aye.
Furnish?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassrag?
Aye.
Malaki?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Mayor, aye.
Palmquist?
Aye.
Pashki?
Aye.
Bryniki?
Aye.
Okay. That moves us to item number 10 in the agenda, presentation of ordinances, resolutions, and other items, first of which is resolution number 2025-85, authorizing a budget amendment for fiscal year 2425. Stuckins? Oh, motion. By Bowring, second by Pashke.
All right. So as stated, for your consideration, as a resolution authorizing execution of fiscal year 2425 budget amendments, for your consideration, the following amendments include a transfer to the General Capital Projects Fund to support future building improvements and repairs, with funding provided from the general fund fund balance and savings from various expenditure line items, for the Fisher Farms Pond Maintenance and Landscape Maintenance, with funds provided through fund balance, for costs associated with garbage disposal services and pension expense in the Refuge Fund, with funds provided through fund balance, to cover the costs related to general insurance premiums and claims funded through insurance reimbursements and interest income in the Workers' Compensation Fund, for the Police Pension Fund to cover costs of professional services and training with funds provided through interest income, and lastly, to fund the Firefighters Pension Fund payment for unexpected retirements with funding provided from interest income. I would note that this resolution does require eight affirmative votes for passage.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do we have any questions or comments?
I also forgot that Director Maluski is with us, too, to answer any questions.
I thought, I was looking for her. I didn't see her. Where's she hiding? There she is. Alderperson Reinecke.
Is there any impact of this amendment on the total budget from last year, from the fiscal year?
Technically, no. So what this is, is now that the audit is done, they have, we know what we've spent, what we haven't spent, so we're able to transfer to the General Capitals Fund because we were under budget on some items. So all in all, it doesn't exceed the budget that we have, if that makes sense. And I don't know, Jennifer, if you want to come to the podium and further explain, but it's, this is kind of a housekeeping thing to make sure that everything matches up.
It is normally a housekeeping thing. We bring a budget amendment at the close of every fiscal year to just, again, kind of line things back up and then reallocate some of those resources with the community's priorities.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, guess we're ready for a vote.
Bowring?
Aye.
Furnish?
Aye.
Hilberg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Malakie?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Mayor, aye.
Palmquist?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Reinecke?
Aye.
That passes 10-0 with one alderperson attending remotely. And next up is resolution number 2025-86, adopting the City of Geneva Facilities Master Plan. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Alderperson Malakie and Marx.
Okay. So in June 2023, the city engaged FGM Architects, Inc. to provide professional architectural and engineering services for a facilities master plan for facility, city facilities, including City Hall, the adjacent former library building, Fire Station 1, Fire Station 2, the police station, and the public works facility. A preliminary draft plan was presented to the city council at the strategic planning workshop in 2023. Since that time, the consultants have continued to refine the plan while the city embarked on a community engagement process in the fall of 2024. At a special committee of the whole meeting on June 23, 2025, a draft plan was presented to gather input from the committee of the whole. So for your consideration this evening is a resolution that is adopting the facilities master plan. This plan is a planning document to help guide decisions relating to city facilities over the next several years. Adoption of the plan does not commit the city to do anything specific, but rather helps create a roadmap to achieve the city's strategic goals for strong governance and quality infrastructure and services as they relate to city facilities and the provision of services to the community. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. We do have our representative from FGM with us as well. But again, we took the feedback from the last committee of the whole, and that has all been incorporated into what is the, we call it the final draft, it's the final, but again, it's a plan, so as we know, plans sometimes change over time. Thank you.
I'm sorry, not right now. There is a time for you to ask or make any comments that you have in public comment, but now it's time for the city council to deliberate. Thank you. I said deliberate, and then nobody wants to deliberate.
Brad.
Alderman Marx.
You know, we've been working on this prior to 2023 as a council, and I think that this is a fruition probably of about five-plus years, realistically, I would say, because I've been on the council through these. And again, I think it's a plan. It's not set in stone. It's the goals of the city that we're going for. It's just the map that the council at this time has decided to take, which buildings should be taken, should be worked on first, and that's based upon feedback from citizens. And there was a study before this that showed us all of our facilities and marked up what it would cost to get them up to proper code and to work properly and resize them. And those two plans together, and a lot of meetings came to the culmination of this. And you were there for a few of them, I know, and you met with some, the consultants did meet with council members two-on-two for a period of time, a couple of years ago, but I think people need to realize that this just wasn't decided in a vacuum. There's been citizens' feedback that we went out and got, and it's a culmination of years and years of a number of plans that we've been working on. So I just wanted to fill people in on that. It's just not something that we came up with last week. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Marx. Alderman Palmquist, did you have a question? No, I thought you were raising your hand.
Mayor had a question. Sorry. Alderman Mayor.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought you were raising your hand. Okay. Just getting used to this. Alderman Mayor.
Okay. I just wanted to say that I reviewed the report, and I think it's an excellent summary of where we are right now, and a lot of work in reviewing the current conditions and coming to some concise and clear points to share with the public about how the facilities for Geneva are situated currently. And, you know, it definitely shows a need for more investment, and the main takeaway should be that we're not saying how this is going to be funded or what we're going to do, but this shows a really complete understanding of how the facilities need to change over time, and I hope that it continues to be a useful tool.
Thank you, Alderperson Mayor.
That's all I've got, Brad.
Anybody else? Alderperson Reinecke.
Yeah, I've had the chance to read the document fairly carefully as well, and I will tell you, it is, it's polished, it's considered, it's thoughtful, and it's, even beyond that, it's well articulated. I could see the thinking of the writers as they moved through it from page to page, and that's the mark of a well-executed report. I agree entirely. I think the question is going to be, how do we put this into action? And that's going to, the funding of this and the execution of it, that's also going to take some time and consideration, but the report itself, it really lays out what we need and how we should be thinking about the development of these resources over the years. So it's nicely done. Thank you.
Alderperson Malakie.
Yeah, I agree, just like everybody else, I believe. We can't get anywhere from point A to point B without a plan. I think this was really well done. It's, you get towards the end of the document, and I think they did a really nice thorough job of pointing out how things were evaluated and whatnot. The how is always the big question, but I don't think that we, as a community, you know, would have an easy time without this document. It'll, it's going to allow the public to get into it and digest it, which I think it is very easy to get through. Takes a little bit of time, but it is well worth it for someone to sit down and see where we're going to have to end up down the road to, you know, have a thriving and quality community for years to come. So thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
I wanted to concur with the comments of my fellow alderpersons. As another new alderperson, as alderperson Reinecke stated, you know, I appreciate the process as well, and as one of the new folks up here to realize the steps that happened and the process and the stakeholder input, and the public input was really instrumental in buttressing the full, final recommendations, so.
Anybody else? Alderperson Hilberg.
I think we need to realize that a lot of the facilities that we have here in Geneva, some of them date back over a century, like the one that we're in right now, as well as other facilities that served a population of 6,000, 8,000 people. As Geneva's continued to grow and its technology and a lot of the things that have taken place in Springfield as far as legislation, our facilities have become dated, in some instances obsolete, and it's time that we take a look at a very visionary plan that carries Geneva into the next half-century. These facilities are a necessity. Are they going to all appear suddenly? No. I think what this does is it gives us, as been pointed out, a roadmap, and what the council needs to do is really determine a timeline and a prior, a priority as it relates to these projects, determining which need to come first and which may not be as pressing a priority that could come later. But personally, my vision is, is that we're looking at maybe somewhere between a five- and a 10-year timeline here as it relates to the execution of the entire plan. And again, that's going to take community support, but I think for the community to support this plan, they need to know that we have a vision, that this isn't something that is not, we're not pulling a rabbit out of our hat, that here are the specifics, here's the details, and here are the projected costs. And if we believe in the plan, and if we work the plan, Geneva's going to be a better community a decade from now. And again, I appreciate the work that our contractors done with this project, and it's our responsibility now as a council and as a community to move forward with it if we believe in it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll say just two things that I really liked about the report itself. One, that it talked about where the city is financially and its ability to afford the improvements and the upgrades, and also the thought on the pricing and price escalations and discussion about what happens if we don't act now and where the pricing may go. I thought it was honest and forthcoming, which I think is really important, not just for us to make our decisions, but also for the public to know exactly where we stand. So I appreciate those two points in particular. Are we ready to vote? I think so. We'll call vote, please.
Malakie?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Mayor, aye.
Palmquist?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Reinecke?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Furnish?
Aye.
Hilberg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
All right. That passes unanimously. That puts us into public comment. Now would be a, now's your opportunity to speak up. It's our time to listen, your time to be heard, and it's not a question-and-answer session, but we welcome anybody's comments about anything going on in the city or anywhere else, really. Does anybody wish to share any thoughts? Yes, ma'am. Could you come up to the podium, please?
What you do, what you just voted on was the plan, correct?
That's correct. That was.
Will there be a referendum or something?
This was.
Down the way?
So this was.
Because it was supposed to be on, in April, right?
So this was our assessment of our current facilities, as well as our guidelines and thoughts moving forward. Nothing in this plan is specific or set in stone, no money's been spent or anything like that. So now that we, as many referred to it as a game plan, now that we have our game plan, we can move to the next step, which is figuring out how to implement the plan, and that will likely involve a couple of things that you just mentioned, but none of that has been done yet. This is just the establishment of.
Thank you.
And would you mind sharing your name?
Donna Schneider.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Schneider. Mr. Olson?
Just wanted to let everybody know, who doesn't, that the second festival that the city is going to be the presenting sponsor on is this coming weekend. It is the art fair, it's the 23rd art fair that the Chamber has put on. We have 140 artists coming this year of all fields, sculpture, original photography, painting, ceramics, et cetera, et cetera. There are, this will be comprised over four blocks along Third Street in Geneva. The hours are 10 to 5 on Saturday and on Sunday. The art fair that Geneva has put on year after year after year has one of the highest-rated art fairs put on by the country, according to Sunshine Artist Magazine. We were going to have some live music available this year between 12 and 2, provided by where the Planscapes Art Center is at, and we're also doing some free kids activities at 11:00 a.m., both on Saturday and Sunday. New this year is a new Paint by Numbers mural down at Dodson Place. All of the spots have already been filled for this, but over Friday and Saturday, this mural of Geneva will be painted. We hope to keep the mural up through the rest of the summer and early fall, as long as, you know, weather permits. After that, hoping to find a permanent home for it for exhibition. Anyway, we look forward to everybody coming out, enjoying the art fair. It is certainly something to be, it's just, the quality of art is just absolutely amazing. And this is a juried art event, so it is quite exceptional. In addition to that, not sponsored by the Chamber, but I want you to all be aware, because it's before the next council meeting, we have Shakespeare in the Park, which is, which is put on by the Geneva Arts Foundation. The play will be Much to Do About Nothing. It will be down at Island Park. Seating begins at 4:00. There will be food and desserts provided by Stockholmes and Graham's, and the play begins at 6:00 o'clock. So it's always a great time. Come down with the family, stake out your spot, get your blanket out, enjoy, enjoy a little culture. Lastly, I want to just let everybody know that on Thursday, July 31st, there is a fundraising opportunity for the fire department's Joseph Brayden Foundation. That is their scholarship foundation, and we will be hosting that at Stockholmes. This is in recognition of the fire that we had on July 31st last summer, and the fact that the fire department was there within five minutes, five minutes of the call being brought in. Without their great effort, that city block would be very different today. So we want to honor the fire department and their efforts, and we are doing so by supporting their scholarship foundation. So we hope that everybody will come out. 10% of the proceeds that day will be donated, as long as, as well as any additional donations that anybody might wish to make. Anyway, look forward to seeing you all at the art fair at Shakespeare in the Park and hopefully at the fundraiser for the fire department. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Anybody else? Ms. Mannan.
I'm Melanie Mannan. I think most of you have met me. I'm the chair of the city's Strategic Plan Advisory Committee, and I just wanted to talk with you a little tonight as a reminder of our community update that we're holding next Tuesday at 6:00 p.m. at the library. Just wanted to kind of give you an overview again of what's going to happen there. We're holding it to be mostly an informational session that will start off by giving an overview of what the strategic plan is for the public, what it isn't, and an overview of how it was developed, how they can interact with it. And so. and some information on how they can track progress of it as the city works to implement the plan. So we'll start out the evening with a big informational session altogether and then move into what we hope are some more engaging breakout sessions for people to interact with some, some different aspects of the plan. So we're hoping it'll be a fun evening. We're also hoping to get a really broad representation from the community. So wanted to thank you as well for reaching out to people in your wards, to try to get people from all over there. That's kind of our hope is to get really good representation. You know, just a lot of people there that want to learn more about it and understand what's really in the plan and, and what isn't too importantly as well. So that's really all I wanted to share. We plan to follow up with you after the event, just to give you a rundown of, you know, how it went, anything that we learned and what some of our next steps will be. We're hoping to have an additional one either later this year or early next year, based on some of the feedback that we get. So right now, we have about 46 people that have officially RSVP'd. That's gone out in several mediums. So we didn't require people to RSVP and we're not holding anybody to it. It was just to get some feelers out. So we're hoping that even more than that attend. So that is all. Thank you.
Thank you. So again, that was at the library next Tuesday. What time?
6:00 to 7:30.
6:00 to 7:30.
Yes, so July 29, 6:00 to 7:30.
Great. Thank you very much. Big room.
Thanks. And there'll be snacks.
Snacks always help. Right. Any more public comment? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Alderman. City staff. Just under June 7th, there was a meeting. It was a council and a whole meeting, meeting in the basement of the Fire Department on Saturday morning at 9:00 a.m. It was a great meeting. You guys put together a great meeting. The only tragedy of the meeting, it wasn't recorded for, you know, we had it there versus here. Not sure, I'm sure there's reasons for it. But it would have been a great meeting for residents to all see. Our city attorney was there, Chuck Ragovic, spoke about, you know, the Public Meetings Act, when the mayor can vote, when he shouldn't vote. I also noted that most mayors in the cities, other cities, very rarely vote, only when they need to. It's up to the ultimate to vote. The mayor's just to oversee the council. And also that, you know, it talked about when someone comes up to speak like me, you just say your name, you don't have to say your address. And also, I was surprised to see that our lobbyist was there. It was great. Remember, we talked about this lobbyist? We just last meeting, I think we renewed $5,500 a month to him, $65,000 a year to have a lobbyist down in Springfield. I know the importance of lobbying. Lobbying is very important in Springfield. There's so much going on in Springfield all the time. You got to keep an eye on things. So I get the importance of that. But it was nice to see him. He gave a great presentation. And it's a shame that, you know, citizens couldn't see that. June 7th, don't forget, was like the beginning of the summer. A lot of people go on vacation, Yellowstone, Europe, go on all different places. They're not thinking about going to a meeting on a Saturday in the basement of the Fire Department. So also, we talked about the new grocery tax. Got a very nice presentation, new grocery tax, a lot of good numbers, made a lot of sense. So that good decision was, could be made. So it was a very nice meeting. And then the only thing too, on the agenda of the meeting, when you look for the agenda, it had two things on it. City governance and it talked about the budget. That was it. It didn't talk that the lobbyist was going to be there. It didn't talk that we're going to talk about the grocery tax. Also talked about the, the new facilities plan. So that was sort of shame, and I was kind of confused. I'm not sure why that happened that way, but please, be more transparent with your citizens. It's hard for people to keep up with stuff. There's so much information for us to keep up with, right? We got to make it easy for people. You know, we got to know when the referendums come out and why they come out and make sure the math is correct. When a referendum does come out, right? Let's check the math. Let's double check the math. We have a lot of smart people, a lot of good people work for the city. We got to check the math. Also, the FGM report, you guys did a great job. Awesome report. Lot of information, a lot that to digest. Good and thorough analysis. And it was dated July 11th of 2025, so a few weeks ago. But this report, we should have had this last year. If we were going to put a referendum out, why didn't we have this report last year at this time? Then we've been topped, made some good decisions, right? And, and, and make the right decision. We're talking about, eh, we're talking about spending what? For the city hall and the police station, around $83 million is what, you know, the base cost is? For $83 million, we can really do this right. Let's do it right for $83 million. I see a lot of, there's every city, a lot of cities are putting up fire stations, police stations, city halls, all over the suburbs, right? We're all in the same spot. All the suburbs are about the same age. They're all replacing the facilities. There's a lot of good examples out there. There's a lot of right things and wrong things to do. Wrong thing was to, when we redid the police station 20 years ago, that was probably not the right thing to do. Now 20 years later, oh, shoot, we got to replace the police station. It's in bad shape. Why didn't we take an old building and try to rehab it to make it work? Let's do it right this time. That's all I ask with the facilities plan. Let's really think about doing it right. Do we want to have a police station in a neighborhood? Do we have a police station on the wrong side of town? Yeah, we want it in the central part of town. We want it off 38. The side off Richards, in my mind, I know it's private property. But that's a great site. You know, it's on the main street, easy to get out. People come to town. Oh, there's the city hall, there's a police station. Everybody knows where it's at right now. I don't know. It's hard for people to find a police station, I think, unless you really know where it's at. You know, you drive around the block a few times. It's hard to see the police station. But it would be a great marquee for the city. Also, if you were to build it in a different location, we could stay here, have our meetings. Police station, build a new facility, do it right, and then repurpose these buildings. We love this building, right? A lot of things could be done with this building. I think it was a theater at one time. It was a lot of different things. So, so we're talking about vision, right? Alderman, talk about vision. Let's really have a vision. Look at the smart people we have here in Geneva. We have so many smart, good people in Geneva. Let's do it right. It's $83 million we're looking at spending. That's a lot of money. And every year we wait, like delaying the referendum, but it costs millions of dollars more. It doesn't go up 5% a year anymore. It goes up 10%. It might go up 15%. Who knows, right? Terrorists and all this stuff. Stuff gets more and more expensive. The longer you wait, time is money. We got to make good decisions, have meetings. It is so important. You guys have been working hard all summer. I've been watching you guys. You guys have been working super hard all summer. And I appreciate that, right? We're out golfing and being on lakes and doing stuff. You guys are here in meetings, right? So, but please, let's just do it right for the citizens of Geneva. They deserve it. You know, let's do it right so that everybody here, you know, understands what's going on and something make us proud. You know, something make us proud. Let's not retrofit stuff. Let's do it right from the beginning. It's more energy efficient. It's, it's just better to do than rehabbing old buildings. Also, I mean, a gun range, I know, might be important. I don't want to upset the police department. I'll probably get this being taken away home. But do we really need to spend $6 to $8 million on a firing range? That's what a firing range costs. $6 to $8 million just for the firing range. That's all, you can, you can do a lot of driving around. You can, you can rent prop, I mean, there's, there's firing ranges around. There's alternatives. That's a lot of money for a firing range, right? We want the best for our police. We want good police cars, good technology and all that. But there's decisions like that that we need to be make. Let's be smart about it. Let's really be smart about it. Thank you for your time.
Anybody else like to make any comments? Would the Boy Scouts like to tell us why they're here? And why they were forced to sit through this boring meeting? Would you come up to the microphone? You're going to get your public speaking badge today, too.
Like, today we're working on the citizenship and the community mayor badge. It was a very fun meeting. And I believe one of the requirements was to attend a meeting with the community. Well, basically, you guys.
We appreciate you picking this one. It's a good one.
My name's Kagan Hammond.
Oh, would you mind sharing your PAC number for the record?
60, Troop 60.
Troop 60. All right. Thank you very much for being here, Troop 60. We appreciate it. And thanks for the lead and the pledge of allegiance. All right. I think that's it for public comment. Any new business from the dais? All right. Second, from Reinecke. All in favor? Any opposed? Meeting adjourned?
Mayor, aye.
All right. We are back in business. I'm Mark Reinecke, Alderman of the Ward. And welcome to the Committee of the Whole. We have just a few items tonight. And so in the spirit of efficiency, I would like to be brisk and we'll move through these as we can. All right? At the top, let's see, what do we have? The top of the agenda, we have approving the meeting minutes from July 7th. That's correct. Everyone's here except for Mayor Murray. Very good. Pardon? Yes. All right. So we'd like to move forward with approving the minutes from the meeting of July 7th, 2025. Bowery and Kelleron. Okay? That's right. Voice vote? All in favor? Aye. Any ayes?
Mayor, aye.
Was there a name?
No, it was Mayor aye.
Oh, Mayor aye. All right.
Say your name, man.
All right. So that was a-
They confused everyone.
Yes, that was a pass then. All right. In terms of item of business, we have a draft resolution. Would you like to read that? Oh, I read this? Okay. It's authorizing the city administrator to execute a contract with Era Valdivia Contractors, Inc. for a total not to exceed $445,500 for the Kirk Road Water Tower painting. And any discussion on this?
So now I'll speak.
Oh, now? Oh, okay.
Okay, so funding to paint the Kirk Road Water Tower is included in the fiscal year 26 budget. The project was advertised in the Daily Herald and on the city's website. Nine bids were received. After a view of the bid submittals by Fairgram Engineering, the recommendation is to award the contract to Era Valdivia Contractors, Inc. of Chicago, Illinois. It should be noted that the first three low bidders had a combination of problems with the bid documents submitted and therefore were deemed non-responsive. The bid by Era Valdivia is below the budgeted amount. And for comparison, the Dodson Street Water Tower was repainted in 2020 at a cost of approximately $580,000, which is about $180,000 more than this proposed contract. The tower will be sandblasted and painted with the same colors and logo that was applied to the Dodson Street Water Tower. Specific questions can be directed to our Superintendent of Water, Superintendent Van Gescum.
I apologize in advance for not thinking of this question in advance. So I'm springing it on you, but I don't think it'll be too hard. I was just curious, do we have a sense of how we got so lucky as to have a reputable bid that was lower than we were anticipating and lower than the last repainting, the upper water tower?
I think it's just all timing. I think some, sometimes, you know, contractors will, you know, try to get other projects. And I think it was just all timing and we did get a, you know, a good, several good bids, actually. So-
Great to hear. Delighted to hear it coming in under what we budgeted. That's excellent and happy to go forward with it. Thank you. It looks like Alderman, Mayor has-
Mr. Mayor?
Hi, Bob.
Hello.
I, I heard that it's going to be similar in scheme to the East Side Fire or East Side Water Tower. Does that mean we're going to have a combination of dark blue and light blue on this one, too?
Correct.
Like blue bottom?
Yes. That, that's what our intention is.
Okay. Well, I think the one looks great, so I'm excited to see what this one looks, looks like when it's finished.
Yep. I'm excited, too.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Superintendent. Just, just a question for you and staff. Do, for projects like this, do we require like a payment for performance bond at all for the work?
Yes, there's a, a performance bond and a contract bond.
Okay. That's all I, that's all I was wondering. So thank you.
Other questions?
I, I think, Bob, one of the reasons for the disparity in the, the cost of this project is the, the structures themselves, right? That's a part of it.
Part of it. It, I, I would think that it would be easier to paint a tower like Kirk Road with less details on it than a legged tower like that. And so it, it should take, you know, less effort to, to do it. So, yeah.
I see that one of the, the bidders was, one of the bidding companies was disqualified because they lacked experience in Illinois. Does that mean that if you're an out-of-state company that you're at a disadvantage? What did, what did Fairgram have to say about that?
The concern, first of all, we, we required that they submit our projects that they had performed in Illinois. And those three did not submit any of those projects that they have done in Illinois. I think that there's some concern with quality that Fairgram was concerned about. The other thing was wages that would be paid, prevailing wage had to be-
Came into play.
Yep. So those are the main things.
Okay. And then their intentions are to get started on it here fairly soon, right?
We want to complete it this fall. So we're, we're looking September timeframe, taking the tower down and out of service.
Okay. And then that will mean interior as well?
Spot interior. It shouldn't need the sandblasting completed, completely on the inside of the bowl area. It'll just be spot sandbl- or blasting and, and repainting and those-
Is that because of the age versus the one on Dodson?
No, it, it's more, we had a, a condition assessment done a couple of years ago. And on the inside, also, there was a robotic camera that went in there and, and took a video of it and, and it was in good condition from the last time it was, it was coated.
And as was pointed out, the, the new paint, the approach as far as the paint that we're going to go with, that'll reduce the visibility of the staining that you see on the water tower right now, getting away from the white. And I think that's a good play because it doesn't look very nice right now.
No. No, it does not.
Thanks, Bob.
Sorry, Bob. While you're up here, I just have one more, hopefully not too trivial question. I noticed with my kids driving down 59, they were just repainting a water tower close to 88. I guess I'm not sure where it is. But we noticed, because I was with my kids, that it had a bunch of, it looked like a partial raincoat around the top. And I was curious because it didn't seem to go all the way around. Is that to provide some shade for the workers? So it didn't seem like it was going to keep a lot of water off.
No, ours will, ours will be tarped. It's to prevent any debris when it's sandblasted and also when it's painted.
Gotcha. Okay. Just curious because we kept talking about it whenever we were driving past. So that I would take the opportunity. Thank you.
Sure.
Other comments? Questions?
Thank you.
Very good. Okay. Voice vote? All in favor? Any opposed?
Mayor, aye.
Very good. Passes. The next item, 3B, considering a draft resolution authorizing the execution of a service agreement with all city management for crossing guard services.
So the resolution under consideration is to contract with all city management for crossing guard services. And this is a conversation that was continued from the last committee of the whole. Based upon discussion at that meeting, the Chief of Police personally spoke with representatives from Normal, Illinois, Urbandale, Iowa, and Lenexa, Kansas. All the references were pleased with the work product provided by All City Management Services. Normal, Illinois is presenting a three-year extension to their county, city council this evening. I would note there were also several questions, both last week and this week, that we posted onto the city's website. we posted onto the city's website, so I won't go through all of those, but those were out there for everyone's review. And then I would also note that if the committee recommends not moving forward with all city management, our recommendation would be to transition all current and future school crossing guards from independent contractors to employees of the city of Geneva. So with that, it's for you all to discuss, but we also have Chief Passerelli with us this evening, and he can answer or clarify any questions you might have.
I was just gonna invite the chief up, maybe to tell us a little bit about what he learned and those, checking out those references and thoughts after the last meeting. You're back, so I assume that means...
I'm back. Yeah, I reached out to those agencies that we had talked about. The overriding feeling was that they appreciated the way they had managed the program thus far, and that while there was a price increase over what they were paying for their own in-house services, that they were extremely satisfied with the services they had. Each state was a little bit different. When I reached out to Urbandale, Iowa, that was in a pretty busy metro area where they said all city is basically the only show in town there. Kansas was a little bit different, but they ranged in sizes from municipalities that had three hundred officers to fifteen. And again, everyone was happy with the services that they were receiving.
Really appreciate you taking the time to check things out and look further into it after we expressed our concerns last meeting. So if this is what you think is best, I'm in favor of it. I, I noticed that in the contract, there's a fifteen-day clause, opt-out clause, so I'm comfortable with that in case things go south. So thank you again for the research.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. I do appreciate you being here again tonight and all of the work that went into this. I, I think at this point, I would still prefer not to contract it out. I want to leave it up to you, obviously, to figure out ways to try to improve things. But I think that there's, I think that there are things that could be done to hopefully give us more coverage from traffic, sorry, for, from crossing guards themselves, so that we're not dipping too much into police resources and hopefully it doesn't become a headache, or doesn't continue to be as much of a headache from a management perspective. I, I am reassured to hear that if we don't go forward with this contract, that we would bring the crossing guards all on as employees, because I had some concerns about the differential treatment of them. But I, I guess I'm, I'm hoping that between increasing pay, increasing possibly the number of crossing guards we have at each location, et cetera, that there might be some solutions that would give us the redundancy that would take the load off. That being said, if we try that and, you know, there are still issues, I'm, I for one am open to hearing that down the line. But I think for a number of the reasons that were expressed last meeting, cost over the long term, also kind of comfort of keeping things really in the community, I, I would prefer not to contract this out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for the added information and research on that. I appreciate that as well. I think I, I also kind of land in the same place policy-wise. I think if you were coming to us with this proposal and the crossing guards were all gonna be paid the same and the issue really was a, a staffing management issue, and we were looking at the difference between needing to hire a full-time person to manage this or contracting it, then I feel like I could really support that. But I think, you know, looking at the massive pay raise that the guards would be getting, I'm not comfortable doing that and paying for the contracted services when we haven't tried just raising the pay. So, thank you.
Other thoughts? Comments? Considerate?
Yeah, I have a question. I apologize for not submitting this, this question. By bringing the employees, contracted employees under the city, have we calculated any rough cost implications, increases that might?
It won't change the budget dramatically because we already have both included in the budget. We have a line item for contract services and a line item for personnel. So the, the minimal increase would be your, your taxes, your personnel payroll taxes, but I don't think there'll be any big implications.
From a budget standpoint.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Technically, actually, there'll be a lesser impact because we've budgeted this year for contracting it out.
Correct.
Sorry.
Okay, thanks.
From the conversations that you've had with these other communities, what are their experiences as far as where their, where the personnel is coming from? Are they coming from the communities that they're crossing guards in, or are they traveling some distance to, to take this type of a job? I wouldn't think that it would be all that great appealing to be driving twenty-five miles to be a crossing guard. Are they of the opinion that most of the crossing guards that they're gonna end up hiring are people that are right here in this community?
Yes. I think that is the, the plan based on their recruiting plan. They embed here and reach out to local businesses. They don't want people from outside of the community if they can avoid that. A lot of those agencies I spoke to were larger, so I think they have a much larger recruiting pool. But that is where they seem to be coming from, is the communities they serve.
I sort of tend to agree with some of the prior comments that if we looked at the salaries that we're paying, I wouldn't think, they're gonna be hiring the same people that, that we could target and hire for about the same money or maybe even a little bit less, and give them a raise to do it. I just, I just would like to, to, to keep it internal and not outsource it. At least that's my opinion at this point in time. And as been pointed out, I think that if we look at a, a stipend increase, a pay increase, we might have more success hiring. And I, I think that I would be inclined to want to give that a shot. And, and a lot of this stems from my experience with, with our school buses and the fact that we've kept that internal to Geneva. And it's, it's served our community well, and we've been able to sustain bus drivers. And I would think it'd be a lot harder to sustain a relationship with a bus driver than it would be to sustain a relationship with a crossing guard that's working less than a couple hours a day. So that's sort of where I'm at on it right now. Other thoughts? Questions? Concerns? No? We're set. Shall we take a vote?
I think you'd do a roll call.
Let's do a roll call, though. Okay, shall we?
Esrog?
Aye.
Malicki?
Nay.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Um, Mayor, aye.
Palmquist?
Aye.
Pashke?
Nay.
Reinicki?
Nay.
Bowery?
Nay.
Furnish?
Aye.
Hilbert?
Nay.
It'll advance, but it will not be on the consent agenda for the next city council meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Onto public comment. Would anybody like to speak? We invite you to come and share your name for the record and provide public comments. New business? Anyone? Shall we move to adjourn then? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Very good. Thank you all.